Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting of the original township board. That was fun, I've never heard of you all before, I just gotta say that. I would like to call me in to order and welcome, everybody. And next, please stand and join me for the presentation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure, word moment.
Here.
First, break of the chair. Senator Green.
Yes.
If you want, I'll take you here and check for you.
Here.
Presentation of our agenda, does anyone have any changes to the agenda? And if there are any people who need to move on that please. I'll make that motion. Thank you for the work.
Sorry.
And the president. Here now, the local county commissioner, I, I thought. I'm calling you. Ross is curious. Next, I'd like to do a brief introduction of the guests. People that have been kind enough to join us here today, I'll give them an invite. We have our local commissioner, Ken Goiki, Dr. John Paul Rea. These are called County Executive Executives. Supervisor Rich Chris Proudie from our native township. Supervisor Mike Cooper from Lee's Township. Supervisor Brad Burson from Township 4 Township. Supervisor Anthony Weaver from Lenny's Township. And Supervisor Eric Paul from Ray Township. Those are also the other doors and communities that do participate in the livestock program that the county does offer us. So, this evening's meeting was basically generated a couple of months ago. We were talking about placing livestock on our roads. And we had some concern, we were going places, what we were going to do. And Trusty President thought it would be a good idea if we offered this up to allow people to come and comment. And of course, since the township is not, these are not our roads, we were lucky enough to have two people from the local county come and listen to our concerns. So, that's kind of what I'd like to do tonight. What I am hoping to do is after I give this three golden minutes, last hour, fifteen more seconds, I'm going to invite people up to podium. Since we do have a fair lot of people, I'm going to have a three-minute timer. And after everyone gets done speaking, then we can have some interaction with Mr. Ray and Mr. Goiki. That's the plan. However, you know, if a discussion breaks out in there, as long as it's a civil discussion, I think it's probably good. Our end game here is to find out if there's anything, any guidance the county can give us that might help us, all of us in the northern Oklahoma County, make our roads better. Help with our ditching, help with our drains. Maybe, we don't know our participants out there. We did invite Jamie Green and she texted me about four, said she was still in session, so she couldn't make it. So, as I said, we do have a three-minute timer. So, what I'm going to do is ask whoever would like to come up and speak first, to please come up to the podium. I did tell people too, if they had pictures that they wanted to bring in, set them down in front of Mr. Ray and Mr. Goiki before they speak. And give us your name and address, and then we'll get to everybody and we're going to do the discussion. So, whoever would like to go first?
Anyway, my name is Zephyr Alhols. My address, 37925 Pound Road. And I'm here tonight on behalf of my husband. He passed away on November 30th of 2023. He got in the road commission, he had a field out in front of our home there, you know, on the field that's flooded. And when the rains came, it, you know, dust made our field. He went to the road commission and tried to get help with that. And they said they'd come back out. I believe his partner was one, was taking care of us. We live by our own. I don't know if that has anything to do with anything, but he said he would see what he could do. He passed away, so I'm here now, took the field just for you. He wanted that thing done. And if I gotta stay here, if I've got Oklahoma County, whatever, I'm gonna be here and I'm gonna make sure this gets done for him. What was the address again? 37925 Pound Road. We're under fifty-three years, and I think it's all that I've done once and we're married. You know, and that's, that's too much, you know? If some county's eager to take care of the town, I know, because my area doesn't care.
Hi, I'm Lauren Shower, 34517 First Round Road. I've called the county road maintenance, I don't want to be dead. When, first off, approach, when you first approach it, there's no, there's no drainage. There's no ditches. Then if there is a ditch, it's like a cove, it's a cove, it's a driveway. So, I've called them many times. You just gotta wear helmets, what's wrong? You know, it's like, it's terrible. It ruins your car. We have to pay for maintenance on it. So, they don't need, when I call them. They're like, "Okay." And they come and grade and do whatever. But then, two days later, the approach is horrible. It's like they hold, it damages your car. I spent thousands of dollars. The linens, shacks, the rust gets crazed because of all the dirt and sand and crap underneath building up. It gets expensive after a while. Tires are not cheap, insurance is not cheap. So, if you could help with that, because we asked on the floor, and they said, "Oh, seven years, it would be before." And that was ninety-eight. They said that, I paid them without our ditches. They did down further, past Little Point, but we're close to nineteen. So, we had, you know, a lot of trucks coming in. When they did Roll Point, they built it up so nice, but they cut these in our road with the heavy trucks. They could have went around on school section and went that way, but instead they used our road. And it took, it's a long time for it to get better, but it's hard to get it to calm. And now, our ditches are starting to get filled up. The other people's ditches are not even moving. It's just like a big sandstorm, a lot of...
34517 First Round Route.
Yeah, that can be, yeah. Yes. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amy Vicki Gash, 37520 Hable Road, this is Township.
Sorry, what was the road again?
Hable, H U B E L. And when we built twenty years ago, you required that we do a program for our driveway. You inspected, you required, gave them permits, twenty years of summer, still don't have the ditch attached. You require that, you give them a northbound skid area. And if you're going to require them to put no mitson, then you really need to put the ditches cut up. Because we're allowed to, and it sits twenty years. And unfortunately, our property has a ditch line of rust on the north quarter and along the road. And our quarter's which connects to the Bell River, which is, I told you. It's never been done. And we go out and, so I don't know, huge disaster.
I'm Anthony's panel, 261620, or near the corner of, and Kansas is getting for that whole section of Berman, Berman, they, they even heard of old cattle lines over there each year. And just watching it wash away, because the ditches are okay, I don't need a section of ditch, you know, it's not going to be so far out and washing through the road corner, everyone in Berman's road, yeah. And so, I'll just wash it right there. And people's yard is flooded, because there's a fire bronzer that comes every year, our neighbors next door is on Berman, never been there, it's like, yeah, I've got some pictures of it. But yeah, so, and like Ricky, forty-nine years ago, we had a new house, and we were called, we did Berman, we did Cove, it was doing pretty good ditches, and it's, it was twenty-five years ago, we don't like the ditch. So, I'm concerned of, we keep putting, you know, livestock on the road, which is good because it does help to, I don't, but, you know, we need the ditches and drains. I think we're on a natural drain over there. The water just, it just don't leak anywhere.
Jeff Alderman, 25285 Berman Road. I'll add to that, my last speaker just spoke of Berman and Bourbon Road. There's, there's ditching there, but it's minimal. I could ask for the county road commission to maybe work with the drainage commission. There's drains that are there that need to be cleaned so that the ditches can drain. There's another instance, there's a new build and Oma Road just self-dated. I don't know how that works at Township. Somebody had to apply for building permit at home. I'm certain that somebody has to look at a, at the site, look at total man. I guess that didn't happen when they built the house right in the middle of the drain that drains the road ditch. I don't know how that happens, who's responsible for looking at those total mans, but they just block the drain right off, and that leads into the cemetery group. So, I don't know, maybe our municipalities and road commission and drainage commission can all work together, work together, really, our community. As of now, I don't see that happening.
Jeff, did you say 25285 Berman?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Hello, Don Smith, 27660 School Section between Berman and Riley. Two questions. Who do you contact for ditching? I mean, I tried calling the county, we left a message, I never heard back. Our ditch is loaded with cattails and restricts the flow of water. I'm a salt or less of my neighborhood, full needs. And second question, I don't know who the brainchild it was. We had a perfectly good road two years ago. We had it asphalted and everything. They had just done it like two years prior. Two years ago, they put this, we call it chip and stone, or, I'll tell you what, most of the stones come off. And in winter, when the clouds come down the road, they throw everything that's on the road, in the ditch or on the, you know, I don't remember why they messed up a good road. And now, construction going on, now we're the trucks for taking all that up right off the road anyway. It's almost back to the way it was.
27660 School Section?
Yes. Appreciate that.
Yeah, Mike Perry, 37513 Roberts Drive. It's in the Meto's neighborhood. Our entire neighborhood, you know, kind of, I know there's probably a couple other people here, but I'm trying to speak for everybody to some extent. You don't have to forgive me, because I've only lived there for five years, and I don't really know who to talk to about the problem. But our ditches, they don't drain. I know there's a retention pond near us that the ditches go to. Once that, and I don't know if that's, if it's an issue of that fills up and it has nowhere else to go, I just don't know. But I know my property itself, I have four storm drains in the corners of my yard, or next to my house on two sides, and then in the back corners. The back of my yard, an entire acre, give or take, I can't mow that until it dry. Mowers, it's almost, I have my four wheeler, because my mower is just getting stuck. I have to pull my mower out multiple times a year because the yard is just full of water. Now, I don't know where those storm drains are supposed to go. I think they're clogged. I absolutely don't know if those are mine. I'm the third owner of a house, so I don't know. I don't know, but I've asked the county for any drawings that there might be that exist for that. I assume they're huge drains. The ones next to my house are twenty-four inches wide with the cover. The ones in the back are thirty, thirty-six inches across, and that's the, that's the cover. And it's, so it's a huge pit.
Wait, did you say hidden that?
Hidden, that was the neighborhood.
I'm sorry, where is the neighborhood?
It's off of Pound and Lees. Anyway, so the whole neighborhood has a problem with drainage. Last year, and I have a bunch of pictures, last year, July 6th, and I know it was a huge rainfall, I get it, but our entire neighborhood was flooded. The last road, that road was completely underwater by at least six inches. I have pictures of them where I walked through, and like I said, my deep, at least three or four inches on water. The drains on my property, when it rains really, really bad, and it's not just that one storm, it's multiple times a year on the side of my house, the one drain has two feet of water above the top of the drain, it's a known drain.
And wait, did you say the retention pond's there, because I'm looking at, you said you're on Robert Drive?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's on the opposite, it's, it's by the railroad.
Yeah. It's both the railroad.
We talked about the rainstorm, we have five inches of rain and three inches of rainfall.
Yep, like I said, I get there's going to be problems. That's one particular event. But on the side of my house, I'm extremely concerned about it coming all the way up to the house, because it comes all the way up to the, to the driveway. That one storm, it was well over the driveway. And I just hope, like I said, I don't know if most of this is a problem. I've called the county, I've asked, but I still don't know the answer to that. So, I don't know if we can just get a...
I'm familiar with that. I'm going to have to opt it, I should keep that myself, see if that's, public works, because you got county drainage either side of the road over there, and the water didn't do it or something. I'll put that, I don't put that on myself.
Okay. Yes, I know, I appreciate it, and like I said, I know, I know it's a problem everywhere.
Just, it's, you're on Robert Drive, but it also would be Veronica Drive in Peggy Lane too, correct?
Correct.
Would be the other portion of everything we drain.
Yes, it rains towards Peggy, or it's supposed to, but I'll be honest, the ditches, every time it rains, the ditches are up.
I'm CJ Thompson, 2778 Road. Sorry, I didn't hear you. 27778 Bourbon Road. And as I can really hear of it, we play that, we get a lot of problems, I've had water that comes out of the ditch, and my problem, but I guess my concern, seeing to a few of these meetings and stuff, is that we don't seem to have a plan at county level, we, on the county of Township, on our roads. You know, somebody take a look at what we got here now, I bet I'm lying, looking at there's certain engineering standards for your roads and stuff, and dishing and everything else, something like that. It seems to be we've got some of the individual problems, that we kind of need to have somebody commit to taking a look at the overall road and ditches here in Township. See what the worst part is, you know, what needs to be fixed, and address the worst first, for big plans to take care of everything. I know the standards for how to plow the roads, create the roads and everything, we're not doing that quite right, so don't. But I think we need to, in addition, in terms of the people's individual problems, look at the big picture. Instead of doing a meteor reaction rate thing every, every year, three thousand bucks or whatever, try to make some future plans, and try to decide what needs to be done, what needs to be done as a whole project, that's all.
I'll turn 78175, that's the Narrea Township address, but it's in the north west corner of the Township Boardman and Home. There's a county drain somewhere, county drain that runs on the south side of Ormond.
That's where it starts?
Yep, it starts right there at Ormond, runs east, it runs to eighty, quarter mile and most, east, and then heads north under Ormond Road and heads into St. Clair County. Is there any discussion with St. Clair County on, you know, coordinating, coordinating, if Old County versus Township does ditching and it needs to a county drain that goes to St. Clair County, that the domain is not measuring, would be solid. Also, you know, ditches leave, the drains, drains lead to rivers out to Lake, if they're doing all this ditching, and it's not going to a well-maintained county drain, would be solid. So, I think we should look at, you know, start at Lake and kind of work our way out, otherwise we're not picking them.
Nice to meet you.
Downstairs. 3101. Been there about seventeen years, one year saturates every year, floods go bad. Down the land, there's a great range down here, but I contacted St. Clair County, because I could get a green permit from St. Clair County, who's out of the county, for a cove, and I put my whole arm in, contacted them about doing ditching, they say, "Oh, Oklahoma County." This has been over the years, it's been over recently.
Okay.
Contacted Oklahoma County, "Well, no, 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 St. Clair County is responsible for that area up to the land, from the land, and you stay."
So, you had to call St. Clair for the permit for your cove?
I had to, I had to call up to St. Clair County, to get a permit.
You were going to get a cove, my air? Where's your asset? Yeah.
I am in the second house, east of the land, on Ormond on the south side. Just look at the old place.
Because that's, you know, that's an intercoming drain, it's just like my previous guy was talking, and when I worked for Candace, I had good conversations with them over there, always saying, "We did that work on the shade for drain, and that was going to be right." And there's still bad spots and stuff in there. And that's why, that confuses me, why you got the permit on, on there, when it actually threw some, you know, Candace is on, just to get that.
I know, I'm going to go ahead and go to the cove, I don't know, St. Clair County for the cove, but, like I said, around the corner, the ditches are nice and deep, but they're not even us getting there. Thank you.
Can I answer some of these questions right now, or will people come back up? I think you can, yeah. I mean, I feel like I'm in a good spot. Yeah, there's a lot of big concern, and I can tell you, you know, like the last time, which, which makes sense, because when I was working for Candace, and I don't work there no more, now I'm your county commissioner, but the plan was laid out, all right? Start at the south end and work up to it, because that's what you have to do. You know, if anybody that's been a sewer contractor, or working on plumbing and stuff, you start at the bottom and you work your way through water, always draining with you. Because you don't want to start at the top, then you're going to be flooding out where it's already flooded. So, you start at the bottom and keep cleaning your way up. So, that was the program, you got to remember. And that department there, you know, we got to take care of all, all the communities in, in the county, and the resources where I'm spread that way. And each, you know, each township, what their priority was, when they started the 50-50 program, and John Paul's going to go on board about that with, you know, the road ditches to be done, but that, the way Candace had it set up was for 50-50 program. She got money out of the, you know, the county commissioners to do that tax program. And your, your township there, previous, when I was just a lake person, after I was out of state, after I quit working for Candace, started to maybe, just for looking into, to do the infrastructure on, on doing the ditches. So, I'm kind of well-versed here for your township, because, you know, that's the stuff that I was doing. So, getting the main drains so that water flows is, is priority number one, working. But you got to remember, you've got the whole township and the whole county. So, where, how much resources can be done, you know, and then how they spread it out. So, when there's, when you got the extra money, you got the willpower here of this current board, you want to do more, which is great, and I can't speak for her office anymore on the county drains, but, you know, that the whole thing is to, how much can they handle, are they willing to sub out work to other people to get it done? So, when I was your state legislator, I worked on the drainage program, that's why I'm so, you know, well-versed in it, is because I had to work with Eagle to get the power away from Eagle, which is the state, back to the county, you know, drain commissioners to clean the drains. And the compromises we made was that you cannot take down all the trees. If you got the banks, on the banks, you can cut it flush, but you need, the root system has to stay for the erosion provisions. You can take the trees out of the channel, and you have to go to original end route. That was, that's the way the law states right now for the county commissioners on county drains, the way they have. Another big issue that we have, though, is we still got the state drains, all of your natural drains, that is not the jurisdiction of the county, and it's, it's basically, if it's like a creek or something, or a river, that is under the jurisdiction of the state, and then you have to go to them, to Eagle, in order to find out if they will issue you a permit to do any work on there, and then it's up to you, the community, to either pay for it yourself, or, you know, some point or another, because the state isn't going to give you nothing unless there's some new, you know, programs out there that work out. But there is lies a real problem, because there's things that I wanted to do, like in the North Branch, the Clip River over on the, you know, west side of the county, they wouldn't let me go in there, and I had a lot of farmers that was really, really, there's, you know, forty-inch caliber trees, that's how long it's been, so that the drain hasn't been taken care of in the North Branch, really, really bad. But then I could work, you know, across the top, St. Clair County is actually pretty good to work with about getting stuff done, and, you know, with them, because they're back to the original land program on, you know, how the, how the drain system works. Usually, if you get a majority of the people that live in that drainage district, which is how the totals all run into it, you can live out of farming in three different drainage districts. But whatever that drainage district work has to be done, everybody in that district pays for that to be taken care of, is how the state law goes, you know? So, if you, if it works out to be ten dollars an acre, you own a half acre, your bill's going to be five bucks assessed on your taxes, and everybody pays for it, that's how the state program is, is set up to work. Candace does it different, because she wants to, you know, use available money that's already in the taxes to take care of those issues. So, that's how she started her program though. But you just remember, if there's drains that, you know, are a large drain, you still have the ability to petition her office, everybody in that drainage district, that you want something done, her engineers have to dig it out, or, you know, do all the work on, see what it is, put a cost factor together, and how much it's going to cost everybody in that drainage district to get taken care of. So, that's, you know, different things. Gentlemen on, on Ormond, you were looking for the name, that was called Chip Ceiling is what they did. Chip Ceiling, most of it is designed for it to actually come off, and what it's designed for is to fill the cracks in with the tar, and not too many people like it. Breaks a lot of headlights, and runs up, a lot of it ends up on the shoulder of the road, and it can down into the ditch that's already eaten to be, so that's another debate, whether, what the county, I don't know that Oklahoma County does very much Chip Ceiling. I think that was done because that's St. Clair County's actual part of the road for maintenance, and why that's was taken care of there. St. Clair County does do the Chip Ceiling program all over. And then, northern Ohio, just a, you know, when you see roads, our gravel roads around here, they're all Chip Ceiling roads. They can put three coats of that on, it looks like asphalt, but it's very, very thin and it busts up real fast. So, when somebody says it's, you know, it's a tar road, usually that's what it is, the Chip Ceiling, just for your information, so you know what that is. But we have a lot of stuff, you know, there is coordination of somewhat, but we are lacking with, you know, John Paul's department over there, on some engineering things that I actually have to do. Like, I shared with them some of my pictures, because when I get people calling me, I just have to write down the problem, send this to the roads department for them to take care of, and it's, you know, I'm a person that likes to get stuff done, and sometimes I feel like I just want to take out my... sometimes I feel like I just want to take out my mini executive, I'll do these jobs for myself, cause it wouldn't take that long. But, you know, we have to go through the process, uh, you know, because there's liability factors in, because of public roads, if I do it, something happens, I know it gets sued, so therein lies the issue.
So I guess I'm just wondering, like, what is the delay on the ditches, uh, water? Is there a fifty-fifty thing, what you doing with the drains?
Yes, yes, that's, John Paul's gonna address that, because the commissioners, before I got, addressed an extra three hundred thousand dollars for, for road ditches, the same exact program as what Candace has, it's a fifty-fifty batch to get extra ditching done, other than what they want to do. And then, um, this is another side note, I do have, this is Richmond Township and it would be Lennox Township, the bridge on thirty-two Marrow, that little bridge there, that's where we're with the high banks, that we just approved that today, it's about two and a half million dollars to that, that bridge to get fixed, and then all your townships, what they put in for your limestone program, we approved, uh, all the townships that are here today, if you want to know how much it was, I got all that information too. So it's all been, you know, it's all approved for all the townships to, uh, go ahead with that program.
Another question. One more to, and, um, where I'm at there, being at Bourbon, there's a lot of new construction going on there, there's other seven lots, where, where there, and, um, down there, and...
Jeff was just talking about that one.
Well, so I'm just worried, cause I know there were drainage problems with the few houses that lived on the west side of Bourbon, and there's like a dance, a swale that goes through, it's such a little deal there, so I'm worried about, I mean, should we stop, like, building other things until we get the drainage issue?
Well, they're really, see, that, that the ditch on Bourbon, go, you know, as soon as you come north of, you know, that, there's hardly a ditch there, you put a quarter, it doesn't have no place to go. That's one that has to, for sure, be...
Yeah, which else is in there that's, um, can they all go up for high, I can, uh...
Did I answer a few of the questions that were brought up so far? No, yes. Ask some more questions, we'll catch up.
Do you want to hear from the other townships, maybe, about what they're doing, and their issues, if they're similar, or whatever?
Same exact.
If anyone would like to speak to that, I need the supervisor to back it on, they have to listen to them. Please.
Do you want to pick up on the topic?
Sure, if you want to, I'll talk to you in a minute.
I'm gonna drag you off, I'm gonna put a picture here, you know, I'm not sure you heard, uh, uh, material. Uh, first thing I'd like to say is, the employees from the road commission, and we people out here, and all the, and all these companies, anyway they could, uh, they all make staff live times, and the lives come from my area, and I go here, it's really delicious. Uh, the lady right here, the sort of old grain house, the land manager, I'm pleased that this is that grain house, but I had to stop, and I got some other property, and it's also an intercompany drain, but the last meeting I had here last year, I probably had to bring, on the county, from St. Clair County's here, and said he would do this section, and that only leaves a little bit left in the home, but the home drain, I just saw a little bit of that, and I thought, I asked a lot of the company, I can see that's another, another, uh, deal, and he'll, he'll do that, you know, so, they're, they're not cooperating. And, uh, uh, I think Tim mentioned, you gotta start, you gotta help, and bring your way upstream. They've come out here, and they, they make a bath, make a certain section, make a bath with a whole ton of water, a ton of cushions of water, for the, um, one example, what they just did, uh, within the last month and a half, they cleaned off the ladder drain, and washed it down, always, and then they, they quit, uh, uh, then, move them, uh, just to the shaker, it, it comes from the, uh, south going north, and it's supposed to turn and go along the, the, uh, south side track road, but further up, it's plugged up, and now it goes right to us track road, and I got a picture right here of all the gravel in the ditch, and, and it's gonna keep taking the road out here every time, you know, they need to start downstream and work their way up, you know, and, and then, when I talk with a lot of, it's, oh, I was out here, the water was exploding, but, yeah, there was rain for three weeks. I, I rode these, I rode those roads, I tried and ran out of that area for the last forty years, and I can tell you where the water goes, goes right out of track road, goes down all these roads, it goes across people, everywhere. And, and, uh, the contracts that force the four of them, they, they just fall out, they think that's, um, whoever's dealing with the, this, this, that, that's the way they want it done. And, and just, just down to where they drive a lot of roads, and, and, if you remember I got there, there's this much dirt, and the, the quarters above this high, and then this one to the bottom, you know, and they claim they clean the ditch, no, all they do is hold it kept. You gotta take it back to the original rate, that's the way it was designed, and, and that's the way it's designed to work, and that's what they need to do. Uh, a month, three or four weeks ago, I had a point of discussion with them, and, and so they were like, and they said, okay, we're allowed to get some contractors in here to do the work, and, and, and I showed them pictures of, you have the counties do it. So, okay, so, they got, they got a couple contractors, let them over here, walk the drain, tell you he's ready to do it, he's just got to do it on another contract, which calls him, he's proved to do it, and, and he wanted, wanted to build, and, and then they, and they said, well, they, they, they talked to him on Tuesday, then they didn't show up. Then I got a phone call saying, they're gonna do the same program that they've done, you know, and, 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 and that particular rate, and that's the check, they wanted to start a wall road and go upstream. That's my nephew's farm, we already clean, and, and, and my farm, it's not like you know, we cleaned all that, we need downstream, you know, but, no, and they, you know, and they told one of the farmers on there, said, oh, you know, we can come in here, and they said, oh, ready, clean this, and they said, well, who moved it kept? We're all equipped with it kept, you know, we need vertical. Uh, and, so, but they promised they were gonna do contractors, then when they asked them, why did they go back to the same old shark? You know, I'm not blaming what it's doing, because there's, there's, there's five workers at home, and that's probably why they didn't have the other one, because, because, the way I was, uh, if they wanted me to do it that, the other way, I wouldn't do it, cause I don't want my name attached to it, I, I, I wanna do it right, that's probably why the third contract, that's probably aren't doing. So, um... Another thing, when they do come up and clean these roads, uh, the road dishes, when the road provision comes out, they bring this wave off here, from the neighborhood barn, and come out, when they not clean it back. Why can't they stay out here, if the job isn't going on for a week, why don't they stay here and work, you know, instead of having a couple hours without the road? And, and, no, when they put limestone, they look, they look the greater, right by my farm, because there's a lot of work going on there, and they probably don't want to start, I thought, they're out here. Why can't they do that, the greater can stay here, why can't the grain off stay here? I, I think they, they're not efficient, the way they work, you know, and I'm, and I'm not blaming the workers, we're doing what they're told, like we all do, I worked for a lot of contractors, you know, you do, you do what you're told, so, I, I, I want everybody to think, and I don't, I don't, I don't blame others.
Randy, so if you go, give me a list, and then I'll take that to Candace's office, you know, which is, will you?
I wanna go with you. I said, Randy, in fact, my text message, all other employees were forward for, if that's what you said, you could help contractors, go ahead, give it. I'll go with you.
Randy, you got a few questions. The, the concern about the, uh, in that, was cleaning of that, to let the drain help that issue or not?
Oh, yeah.
And, do you think that's one of the major problems?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I was only, what, maybe a thousand feet in the joint drain?
Yeah.
So, one, one road up there, and...
It's not a real lot, like, like you said, there's not much left to do there, you know?
And, a lot of shit. I've got pictures on France, I believe, on the front, and that whole corner as well, that's, that's potential water, the whole part of the field, we can see it on there.
Yes, yes, that's my, that's, uh, I put you, uh, for, for, especially with the water storm, both, and the red one's size is nice and, very, uh, uh, you brought it, it's, it's... Yeah, there's, you know, how it, well, it's, it's like, you know?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm cleaning, it's like, yeah, we're, we're, yeah, so, you're wrong, like, you know, yeah, so, we're all, we're all, yeah, so, when you do this, the small part, we'll try to, you know, fly, you know, it's, 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 it feels terrible, but that, you know, the drain, is that, don't you have to break it?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But, for, for, a lot of, yeah, I mean, come on, yeah, yeah. I mean, I was, I was, I was, you was, you were, 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 you[1406.12] So just adding rattle isn't, you know, it's actually contributing that problem. But that's one thing, it's also not, this is one like I mentioned last week. It doesn't limit to just rattle roads and things like that. And I brought a picture of where I live, clearly two miles. Where the ditch along the north side of the road in Richmond Township by Richmond Salomon Drive, Richmond South of the town, doesn't exist anymore. And if any considerable rain backs over the road across the yellow line, so crap in both directions are going through and throwing water into incoming vehicles. So it's not just anything that means a mess, it's a safety issue.
Thirty-two, no point. Thirty-two, no point, right by the Eso thing there.
Well, this is far, the rattle road doesn't.
Yeah, because they fill it in and they park on the side now.
Yeah, the water comes up out of the back of the drive and it'll use to be back up. And I was on the shoulder of the road instead of ditch, so I can leave the picture.
Look, John walks away. See, you know, on the, on the trapping of the water like that, see, that's why the drain commissions were so important when they got started on petitioning to find out that natural waterway that may be the opportunity for a spot for a new drain to be dug to take care of that, shooting all the tolls on everything. So that not, not all properties are taken care of back in the nineteen hundreds when all that stuff was taken. You gotta remember, the drain commission was a whole powerful office in the county back in turn of the century back then. Because that's what made farm ground, is when the people petitioned and got the drainage districts all established. But there's still spots that never were all taken care of. One is for sure is the drain coming right up on, on Haven Ridge. I did that, I started all the way on I-94, went all the way up to twenty-nine and a half mile where I ran onto Heisman. So, right there at Custer and thirty mile road, the water has no place to go and now the farmers gotta clean some ditches out in the middle. But they never get the easement to take it, take the ditch, the county drain right to the intersection. So that's my point about there's spots that still need to be taken care of. And that might be something that, you know, the drain commission and the people in that drainage district are gonna have to address to take care of. I hope that that gets, you know, helped a little bit.
Sheen Child Farm, Jacob Property Farm, and Babo Road, Amy Pratt Road, Richmond Township. To add to what some of the other farmers have said as well. We own the Smith, the Smith Drain goes through our property and we clean where we can. But then you get to a property line like Randy says and you're stuck and the water stops. And so, like that needs to be cleaned. St. Clair, a couple of years ago, we heard St. Clair County and Macomb County are gonna work together to destroy together. St. Clair County's on their end, ours stopped at our home. Also, this spring, water over M-19 State Highway, right here, very dangerous situations. Can't even see the road and cars are passing through the campus of a, a water over the roadside.
That's a carpe drain. What do you mean is a drain?
Carpe.
Right across the street. I had an old county drain. So, a couple of months ago. Jerry Grobel. I thought I was the oldest one in Grobel County. I've been a resident for eighteen, three years in Grobel County. And I worked around the Smith Drain now twenty-eight years. And this one across the road, sixty-one years. They both need to be cleaned out. I wanna discuss the point that you start from the beginning. That's where I started. I got tired of waiting for the county to clean out that drain. Cause I had a pile underwater. And I cleaned it out myself, made a build myself. I got tired of waiting for the county. I don't expect to be reimbursed. I prompted I did. If I did it properly, probably in Dale, then I don't have to work for it. But we need it cleaned out. Section eight, across Heaton Road, across school, shoe road. That's the hole on the Smith Drain. How far do you go? Get to the Bell River, go for it. The best priority we want out of this area.
See, that was the whole thing about, that last fall, I don't know, you know, I volunteered to help the township before I was anything. Is they were setting it up and putting the priorities together, put a list together and then turning, you know, somebody from the township then turned them, turned it into Candace's office and say, this is our priorities, you know, this is what we found, let your guys look at this because this, this is what we know firsthand and go from there. But at that time, Danny Acavetti was still there, now he's gone, now Don Brown is in there.
I tried to work with him about twenty years ago.
With Don, correct, yeah. Well, I'm not at that department, but I am the county commissioner. So I'll, I'll, I'll try my best, but I mean, that's, isn't that what, you know, the board decided that, you know, working on this and that's why you're having this meeting tonight?
That's what, yeah.
Yeah, to find the priorities.
We've already set up a priority list.
See?
Yeah. This is around the carpe drain, back in the thirties. I was done by hand with the CCC, but it's done.
All of them books are down at the bottom of Candace's office. And I can't, you know, and it's, and it's pretty interesting because it shows from the eighteen hundreds, you know, on, oh, and then, cause I had to go in there a lot to find out how much easements I actually had to work with every place. And like, like I tell you, that drain coming up, you know, from, you know, through Haven over there, you know, and I'm looking to find, it's like I wanted to keep going, I couldn't, you know, can't own private property. And that's the issue. There's another issue that we got, especially in like great township right now, is our, and we got a problem in our main township, and it's with the state drains, you know? Eagle's in charge of it and they're plugging up and, you know, they got wooded wetlands. We need the water to get to that wooded wetlands to spread out, to stop flooding. I mean, Haraway's, you know, it floods over to like a foot and a half of water. You know, the supervisor's shaking, saying, yeah, 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 I got dishes in that too. So it's like there's, we've, we've got issues all across the whole top. Right now, I got a roofing issue at thirty-three mile road and just, you know, east of Ridge Road.
This one right across the road, give the water. Six inches across M-19?
Yeah.
That's, that's ridiculous. All they need is direct drainage channels, property.
Jerry, I clean the water by, up, up until, right by, what was it?
You got your, you park your belt?
Yeah. Well, they make them do it, but it's just a little strip left there.
Yeah, a little bit. And then?
And then I will take care of M-19.
Yeah, you bring your equipment in tomorrow. Throw the, spill it right on top of my siding, because I don't care. You're all losers about making canoes and siding. And the tree across the road, the seventy-six, the county made the trees for the break. Done the same out of the sea. Eighty-three years, I got a lot of houses.
Yes, you do.
Thank you, sir.
I've known your brothers fifty of us.
Better steer your wrong.
No. But I've known, I've known Randy two years more than that.
I didn't think that could be. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
I have another question, I guess, since, when I asked about hearing from other townships and county levels, about the same projects, we didn't come up with a plan, I feel like, I think that was the idea why we brought all the township in, was to show that we're not just one major township up here in the corner, something that you'd like to, or like a whole block of townships that are going to be like that. So, I think what I'd really just come out and make a, some kind of plan and some action and we, we could block in the state to do something different, or whatever we can do, I guess. Here, how we can work together and resolve all the issues. Dan's not looking.
You know, I, I just to throw this out there, it goes like, we're talking about the north end right now, and Supervisor Christian is sitting right there. He's got a huge issue. One issue over there, it's like the twenty-one mile of Jefferson, this pool area all drains into a pump station and they still got flooding over there. I worked on that when we had the high waters, you know, the water, you know, the elevation of what the lake was compared, and all the property all around there was like a foot and a half lower. So everything goes into this pump station down in there and the tremendous cost that it's gonna be for just that one drain, that's which, you know, the Chester field over there. Plus they, you know, they got, there's, so everything in the county is, is, we gotta deal with the water and, and that's what the departments are doing for that, you know? You just gotta remember that it's all focused on everybody, but we want our share too. But I'm just trying, you know, just to give up a focal point on it, that, you know, in war right now, there's a drain down north that's big enough to, to drive a D-ten through. A D-ten is the second largest bulldozer the gap building makes. And I told them about the tech center down there. Did you ever work on that, Randy? That one over there by the tech center, that county drainage, it's, it's a CMP. It's a coordinated metal pipe and stuck to rust, oh my god. That thing is like thirty foot wide and eighteen foot tall. Can you imagine what that cost is gonna be? Something has to be done with that. Now, I'm about to, you know, the tank cars are all the way and you got, you know, the drains. So, we gotta remember this is the countywide, you know, stuff that has to, and it's all infrastructure and it's why, you know, when I look at major problems, like the government's like, why don't we spend the money on infrastructure instead of all these other programs? You know, get rid of the combined sewers down there. So then you know, you know, look at everybody up in here, they had to fix their septic fields at ten, fifteen thousand dollars a pot. The people down in the south end, if they spent that much for upgrading new sewer separation, you know, we wouldn't have to worry about like St. Clair getting polluted too. You know, but instead they came up here and it's like, oh, you know, we got all these bad septic fields. Well, everybody's got the bad septic fields fixed up here now. Sometimes it feels like, you know, we're the ones that are getting kicked in the teeth and everybody else gets, you know, free on it. But there's issues with infrastructure across the whole county and we got to focus the hell of a tribe that the north end, which is I represent, just a number. The county teams track, you know, the commissioners. District one gets twenty-five percent of the complaints called in out of thirteen districts. I get, we get twenty-five percent of the complaints, ninety percent of them complaints are road commission issues that are coming in there. So, let's stay in on this, but you gotta keep making your voice little bit, so I'll kind of let you fill it in.
Hi, friends. So, my name's John Moria, I'm one of the deputy executives and I have a great pleasure of not only working on St. Ken, but county executive for our county. I guess in county years, I'd be seventeen years old and one of the things that I'm incredibly appreciative of, the supervisor, and so many friends have been here today. Keith would yell at me back in the day when I was an intern back in the planning department. I, I haven't seen John in a minute from the days back when he was superintendent on the PBR committee and everything on that. Randy and I had the opportunity for him to yell at me in the middle of the road as we were trying to fix the issue on thirty-four mile road by Russ Road. And I think Mike and I probably had the most eventful undertaking. We were standing at the M-53 bypass in Evelyn Road when there was an issue with regards to a state bypass in a patching program. And I say that not to, you know, illustrate the fact that we're not only in tune to the needs of the community, but we're committed to finding solutions. And we talked about finding those solutions and developing a strategy and that's what we do every single day from not only the Office of the County Executive from Macomb County Department of Roads. The biggest thing that we hear is ditching, ditching, and more ditching. And last spring, we brought together the township supervisors, a number of experts with regards to right-of-way jurisdiction and we laid the foundation for a brand-new ditching program. The Office of County Executive and Department of Roads brought a proposal to the county board of commissioners to fund a drain program with three hundred thousand dollars that masks in years the exceptional work that Candace and her team have started to do on county mainline roads and takes it to roadside ditches that are in the jurisdiction of the Department of Roads. That program was just sent to the township supervisors this week, which certifies a match program, which will deploy a million-dollar ditching program that gives this community the discretion to propose those areas in which they want to prioritize, in which we at the Department of Roads will bring the full force of our maintenance team and also ditching contractors, that as Randy has laid out, will be able to facilitate the full flow of those drains and remove those obstructions. The other assumption that a lot of folks have here is the whole notion of the impact that we're currently having on the roadways. What I would like to highlight is to date, currently right now, up to, as we sit here today, in 2025, we have answered a hundred and twenty-eight service calls in Richmond Township alone. Since 2021, our maintenance crews at the Department of Roads have answered one thousand two hundred and one hundred and fifty-five maintenance calls. So you're absolutely right, there are needs that exceed not only the capacity of the crews that we have, but they continue to fall on every single day. And while it may seem that there may be times where it's gonna take a little bit of time for us to get to them, our crews are out there and our crews are committed to doing the work. The other thing that I think is absolutely critical is also level-setting the expectations as far as the critical needs. Commissioner Boyke highlighted the fact that infrastructures are not well-attended. Whether it's the work that we're doing, the state representative Green on giving the state to give us more dollars that go directly into roads. This year alone, Macomb County received eighty-five point one million dollars in Michigan Transportation Fund, which is directly our tax dollars that come into road projects and are here throughout the county. Eighty-five million dollars, nowhere. As we sit here tonight, there are two point five billion dollars of needs across Macomb County. Two point five billion dollars. And every single day, that bill comes to light. And I don't say that to belittle anything that has been discussed today because these are priorities that we're invested in finding. But it really sets in the reality of when we're talking to the state of Michigan and we're saying to them, there is no other issue that whether you're a rural community, an urban community, whether you're looking at a county drain, a sewer water separation, a road expansion, a safety program, or a gravel road program, the greatest return on your investment you're gonna get is in the roads that go through our communities. And we have not only been shouting that from the governor's office, the state legislature, Republican, Democrat, Independent, the Road Billers Association, the Michigan Infrastructure Transportation Association, the County Road Association, all the local supervisors, cities, and counties. This is our number one priority and executive packel has not only been saying that every single day that we have an opportunity to engage anyone that's gonna deploy resources. And that's why every time we go to the board of commissioners and say, this is our number one priority, we continue to put projects in front of them, a cost share program that will stretch our dollars even further. The other thing that I think is very critical here is the whole notion as far as the dollars that are going into the community of what we're doing, on the traffic and operations side of the safety programs. Currently, the city of, excuse me, Richmond Township has contributed three hundred and one thousand dollars to traffic, safety enhancements that we're doing. This is everything from striping to guardrails to signage and all those types of things. The county Department of Roads has invested seven point two million in that same timeframe in modernization and enhancements in the community. And we look at the maintenance, which has been a large part of the conversation today. In 2024, which was the last calendar year, the contribution of Act 51 funds that are received by your township. These are your tax dollars that come to you based off the lay mile of roads that we have in our community. It's four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. That year, we brought in additional one point two million to the table. In dollars that come from our maintenance teams, our contractors, our folks that are on the roads every single day to make those enhancements. And when you look at it over the past five years, your community's received about two point oh six million dollars. The county's brought in five point five million more to this community for those enhancements. So, we're here, we're doing work, but we know so much more, there's so many needs. So that's why when we roll out our new ditch program, it not only looks to stretch those dollars even further, but it looks to give not only your community, in concert with us at the Department of Roads, the ability to put these priority areas down on paper. Because as Commissioner Boyke highlighted, if we clear out a drain, we gotta make sure that that's coordinated and blocks that with Candace. Same thing as when we look at it with a limestone program, we can crown ditch, grade a road perfectly, but as you all have kind of highlighted, it's for not if in the first rainfall, they can wash us off into a ditch that doesn't have the capacity to carry it and all our other things. And these are the big things that we're coordinating and we're impacting every single day on that. Our biggest legislative priority at the state of Michigan is a current proposal that would put over three billion dollars of our tax dollars in roads. That would increase Macomb County's road funding by one hundred and eight percent. We have said to every single person that they're second cousin before the state spends another dollar, that bill needs to get passed because there's townships like Richmond Township that deserve that money. And there isn't a day that goes by that myself, or David, or Brian Santos, our director of Department of Roads, Leo, our head of maintenance, Scott, our chief highway engineer, John over in our traffic operations division, and Eric in our coordination division, Vince, our chief of staff, are figuring out strategies that's gonna stretch those dollars even further. We have every single opportunity out there to state that that's the number one priority. We will never shy away from these conversations because we understand that these are impacts that are not only creating headaches not only for the crew as a board, but even more difficult for you as residents. Because that's when you start to worry, when the rain starts to pile up on that. And it's an awful feeling, it's so ridiculous. I'm here not only to take meticulous notes, but as we've been talking with the supervisor and with the rest of the supervisor in the room, we're not shying away from this. We're fighting for every yard of dollar that we get. And frankly, every dollar that we get, we're gonna stretch it even further on that. The ditching program that we started is not only gonna give us the ability to gain some traction in this area, but as we look at coordinating that, not only the limestone program that we have, and again, most importantly, to figure out where are these trouble areas, what we got issues and causes. That's another critical component that we've built into this ditching program that gives us the ability to work with property owners to make sure that the solution solves all of the issues that are in play. Because Randy, as you highlight, we can cut cattails, but unless we get down to that drain base and replace that culvert that's two hundred feet up the road, that drain's gonna back up, those needs are gonna come back in three weeks and we're SLO. These are the things that we're not only in the field enhancing every single day, but these are the solutions that we're gonna bring county home. We hear it, we're committed, and we're gonna find these solutions. The other thing that I would say specifically to the township board, I know there's a lot of conversations, where do we shoot from, where's the best return on investment? These are the types of conversations that whether you need somebody, Scott, want to get our chief highway engineer, whether we can even bring Leo in and some of the maintenance folks that are here at the New Here Yard, we're more than willing to discuss those things with the whole notion of how that strategy is deployed, but most importantly, where you all believe that the greatest deployment of that would be on that side too. The other thing is the layering of these solutions, I think is maybe one of those critical components that not only as we take this back and work with public board commissioner Candace Miller, look, her drain program is exceptional in the way that. And you're right, there are other drains we gotta get to and we gotta clean out. But not only are we trying to find out where the sidewalk ends, but more importantly, where our drains go connecting to the rivers, because as Commissioner Boyke highlighted, we've gotta make sure that that keeps going downstream. Because it's the blockages that are backing up in your farm fields, that are rolling away your driveways, that are ruining culverts and are flushing out those roadblocks. The other thing that I think is absolutely critical about this too, as we've been working with not only Randy, but a number of folks at the state level, is trying to get the state to invest those dollars in the programs that are actually directly responding to these types of things. So whether as you highlighted, the role that Eco plays, where they're focused on open waters and the state and the drains that we're working in coordination with them, those dollars should become available to contractors to clean themselves. Because that's what's gonna help the board ballgame, that's what's gonna diminish the base of speech, and that's what's gonna keep your land more fertile by what we can make of these conversations. I love being in these rooms. I love being in these rooms because your opinions matter and you're the folks who are gonna work with every single day to find these solutions. And I know these just sound like a bunch of pretty words as someone that works for the government, but I've lived in Norvo's County pretty much the entirety of my life and I love this place and I understand that these conversations are a critical part of how we come up with solutions together.
Just, you know what, even if you're talking with years for all of us to be taking here, but like just for a temporary fix, can you hear where the barn's on the sidewalk road?
So that's gonna be a big part of the ditching program.
Just to do, but before you, I, I need to wait five years for it. Is there any way that we can possibly just knock some of that down so it at least goes in it first? Cause it's like we, we take it, a shovel or a tractor and we kind of bake a little hose, wait now, the way that we're too thorough to go into the ditch, you know?
Well, greater operators don't want to be caught, you know, you could do a little better job. Because they're making like fifty loads, I don't know, they put that, they're the largest pit side of the side of the road. They're setting all these ditches.
Yeah, it's just sitting in the road, it's not even moving. Because, you know, like, so here, here I'm driving, I have a four-wheel drive vehicle because of this. And then I get to drive over to the shoulder of the road, and that's driving on the shoulder. And then the tree branches are hitting my car because the trees are overgrown. It's like, you know, you're, you're, I don't know, kind of get away from one problem and then I'm damaging my car because of that. So.
That's a little ridiculous, because.
Three-four, five-hundred, seven, first. Cause it's, you know what, I've called them so many times, they got my name. They don't even need my address when I call them. It's just, I, you know what, I'm not sitting usually, but I've been out there twenty, some years, twenty-eight years or something. And it's like, we don't even live a half a mile from the road. And then it's worse, not by my neighbors, or her, it's just completely into the, the waters just running right into the road. It's not, it's, you know, nothing's moving. So, and, you know, I get it. We try to, you know, cut the grass and all that sort of the water line, try to run through, but those people don't. So it's just gonna create more problems. But is there any way that they could possibly just get some of that done and at least help?
Water doesn't have a channel.
Yeah, Randy?
Good roads start with good drainage. I think you need to cut that out, some of the limestone and anything else you can cut back out. The road here, we start with the drainage. You don't build a building on a bad footing. If you got a good footing, you're gonna think it'll fill up better. And you just add to the top, it's all going higher than ditches anyways.
Great to be on.
Being that John, John Paul, tired of talking about the finance stuff, I'll just go back, I, I, the last conversation I had with State Representative David Green was talking about the road funding. You know, back in the day, I was vice chair of the transportation budget, so I'm very familiar with it. Like to share in general information on it before you guys still don't have a follow. Because, you know, he said the local money that came, well, thirty-nine point nine percent of the money of, of all money coming in from registration, gas, and diesel tax. money coming in from registration, gas, and diesel tax goes to truck line roads, your M roads, I roads, and US roads. Thirty, the other 39.9% goes to your county road. So a dirty little secret is, there's 130,000 miles of county roads, and then it's less than 10,000 miles of truck line roads, sharing the same pot of money. And then the remainder, which is just over 20%, is what goes to the locals, and that's where that $450,000, I think that was the right number with what he told me, that's the local money that is coming in. So Public Act 51 is very, very, it's easy line is Wayne, Oakland counties get cheated. Oakland County has cheated the most, Macomb County is second, and then Wayne is in third. We are the three-dollar counties out of 80 counties. Twenty counties break even, and 60 counties are getting more money than what they put into it. Find a bad road in the UP, find a bad road up on the top of the thumb, you got all good roads, you know, most of them. And, you know, and another, a lot also has to do with your soil type. We are in a low, high-water table area. We need more earth to get a good base, like Randy was just saying. You got to have a good foundation for a good road. But you got to, just, you know, if you pay attention to all that, that kind of stuff. But right now, I'm trying to get more, more money, my conversation with Jamie was, what they were trying to do is get that sales tax that's paid on the gas and diesel at the pump, instead of going to the school aid budget, going to the roads. And it's a political divide on the right versus, or, you know, the right side of the aisle versus the left side of the aisle. It's like trying to make the education budget. So four cents of a six cents in sales tax goes to the education budget. And then the other two cents of it, so you get local revenue sharing for your sales tax according to what your population is in the township. So just to give you an idea, I tried to address Public Act 51 to get more money to Oakland and Macomb. Back when I was there, Macomb was putting in about $300 million with all the registration and all the gas and diesel. And at that time, we were needing to get the $40, $40 million back. So we're really doing good now, you know, getting, what, almost 90?
Eighty-five million.
Eighty-five million, that's what, has increased, but the biggest, the throw, you know, they want to get more money into the fund, but without changing the whole law of Act 51, which I could have got every Democrat, every Republican in Wayne, Oakland, still didn't have enough votes to change Public Act 51 to help us. So and then now, you've got the, you know, the cars that are on, on battery, and then, you know, the hybrids are getting, you know, 50 miles a gallon, so that's, that's revenues coming in, and they're getting, you know, the free ride. So what is the, what's the right ticket for us to, you know, to keep the funding for our infrastructure stuff? Hopefully.
They don't do well in the market, though.
I'm going to, I'm going to right now, take a little break and just kind of change direction. I just want to make sure if there's anybody in the audience that has not had a chance to talk, that has not been up to the podium, that would like to say something, I would like to invite you up now. If you have something to say, you haven't been up here.
See, just to come back to what I was, some other conversations I thought you had, and if anyone needs to get a little, it's 586-4697001. I just asked to talk to Jacob.
And, um, and.
Real quick, and then my email, it's johnpaullikeapope.RDA, I'm, it's great, Randy. Uh, johnpaul.RDA at macomb.gov.org.
And he's great to answer your questions, Randy. I will say that. I'll give you that, but you have to tell them what it's. So I'm going to ask any of the board members if they have any things that they would like to say and comment say you'd like to have, right, of me being anything that I'm on for. Anywhere?
I just want to thank everybody for coming to me and to it. I know we've had a meeting before, and several of us have been here before, and the unfortunate thing is, we talked about it, and we just don't know where to go with it. And, and the amazing thing was, we had a gentleman come to the last meeting, my senior team, but I don't want to let him know, and he brought in a brochure. And at that time, the gentleman was sitting where we're sitting, and he says, this has got a familiar ring to it, he said, take a letter, take a look at these. And we took a look at those brochures, and they were 25 years ago. And you know what, we should have used them tonight because they're still current. It's the same problem, the same thing, the same over, the same, everything's exactly where we are, and, and nothing's changed. It's just 25 years later, we have trouble in usage of the roads. The roads are in worse shape now than they were then, and we have no answers. You know, I think we'd be happy if we could say over the next two, three, four, five years, this is our plan, and we can do a little bit each year, and, and this is what you can expect. Other than we come to these meetings and we all talk, and we all listen to each other and we voice ourselves, and we go home and it's, oh, we, we listened to you, and I know you got a problem, but we can't do anything for you. I, 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 just, is there such a thing as we can get a commitment that this year we could do two or three road ditches, and next year we could do a couple more roads? You know what I'm saying? Over the next five years, we could maybe get a project. Not, not big expenditures, because a lot of times, there, there's got to be times that the grade all isn't needed, and they could come up here and, and, and do some work, you know? What about these county drains? We're working on them already, and I, a great point, jumping all over on them and paying the guy that set up to move his equipment in and move it out, and he gets nicely started for a week, and they move him up and go to the other end of the county, and then we pay him to come back in and get set up again, just drives the prices up. But we make a commitment, say, this drain and this drain is what we're going to do this year, and next year you can expect it, we'll do that drain in the following year. Then we go, I think everybody'd be happy, I don't think there's anybody here with expectations that this is all going to go away next week. All going to go away this year. But it's been 25 years, and we're talking about the same thing, and unfortunately, it's only got worse. And I, we have a lot of other township people here, and I know you're all experiencing a great growth, but Richmond Township's never seen the growth ever in history like we've seen in the last couple of years. And this year, it should be, now, we're talking about, it's becoming, before lines, it's become very solid, there'll be very few large fields left. And, and with that, it's coming, hopefully, a lot of more tax base. Hopefully, a lot of that tax base gets sent to, to Macomb, you know, for your purposes and what you do. But it would be nice if we got some of that extra tax base coming back to take care of the roads that need to be taken care of here, because we're never going to be able to change the system. The, the system's broken, and there's not enough money going around. I agree, we never invented that, and unfortunately, we got to stretch what we need, what we have as far as we can stretch it. But it's got to start someplace. And I think all we're looking for tonight, just some kind of a commitment, number one, I urge you, and number two, I'm going to attempt to do something about it, and number three, this is what you can expect.
Well, to answer some of Charlie's point, we did, we have had some success in Richmond Township. I think a perfect example of that is the law during. I think that's working pretty good, which you guys, all the, and several of the guys out here helped the county work on that. The county has started to allow, you know, locals, and a lot of the local partners have the equipment, to do some of this work, and that's what Randy's been preaching, I think, all along, that we're all going to help him. We've had some success. We do have a kind of a master plan for the county, for the county drain, and that's the program that Candace Miller started. It is a good program, but I, you're right, Charlie's right, where they said, if they would get to a project and stick with it, I think that would be good. And we've got a priority list up here if anybody wants to see us. We do, and we do have that. I hope the road commission would start some type of program with the ditches. Because I think, I think our biggest problem, even more so than the county drains, I mean, we've kind of got that, we've got the county drains headed in the right direction. You know, we could just, as, as we've committed money, that we, the board has committed money to this program.
Yes.
What I hope that the county does now is, we've got to do something with the road ditches, that would.
Most of the people came here tonight with their concern.
They're, they're, they did send that information up, money, and my intent, and I did speak briefly, because I've talked about this before, was to send everybody that paperwork and then talk to you. I know the college board is going to be willing to finish to have, we didn't watch anything about, so I wanted to make sure where the board was, if they made the decisions, and they do make issues 27. The people that came up here and specifically said the problem with the ditches, and I did several of us here, and I didn't want to go and talk to you. Um, you know, there's a floor limit to fill up for each application, and there's a criteria where you can't test. I think so many people in Rome have to break that a little bit, and so probably I'll be taking drives around the township and looking at all the places to check. So, you know, if they're not going to do any new ditches, they're going to clean out the old ditches. So, and there was also a comment from someone in Hidden Meadows with the drainage, and I do know that we talked to the gentleman right out of the corner of Robert, and our, our servant, our engineer, and they went up there a month and a half ago or so, and he looked at the retention base and said the drains leading to that are clogged, and they need to be cleaned up. And that was a whole horse study. I don't, I don't necessarily want to stop all of the issues, but I think it would probably help solve the issues with that. So I can talk to you after the meeting if you want as well. I'm just very excited to hear more.
Just another thing too, with, I think, they brought up about all the houses being built was concerned with multiple substance issues. When this, well, a lot of when this building started years ago, we did not have any department of adding, say like a topographical survey.
But we do require that now.
We do require that now, whether that solves the problem. But just to answer that concern is that years ago, that was not the case, but we just started that here not too long ago, where if a house is coming in, they have to provide a engineered site plan where there, where this water is going to clog, and that's checking to solve all the problems. I think we are, we do know that problem's out there, and we're trying to.
A quick question, Ben, down to the home road. Who approved those topographical surveys? Are they actually?
Engineer.
An engineer, our engineer. And what?
I got some pictures of that, show you. I want to go with that.
So, okay, so I guess I just had a couple of things. I'm asking Mr. Ray and Mr. Boyke. I'm sorry, I just want to say this because I know you're busy looking there, but you're going to get similar answers. Other than continuing to call the county, is there any other way that we should be communicating with them? Should we be writing letters? Should we just come and just point to more? What are your suggestions?
See, there will be.
Okay, there will be, yeah, okay.
And whether it's something that we deploy through our kinds of maintenance, Eric Dimoff, who is our director.
He's been very good to me.
Eric is incredibly responsive and now we're, we're, I think. So the other thing that we started, excuse me, the other thing that started a few years back was our community outreach and education program, or program. So what Eric Dimoff, who's our director of communication, community outreach at roads, comes up with our chief highway engineer, and our folks from maintenance, and also our folks from planning, to coordinate all of these programs that we have. And the city area, one of the things that may be beneficial in here is kind of layering in, not only the commitments you want to make specifically with regards to limestone program, but how we might be able to layer that into the ditching program that we're watching. So again, stretching those dollars out a little bit quicker, and it goes back to what Trustee Credron was saying, I think that might be a better strategy collectively from a township view, while undoubtedly each of your concerns are incredibly monumental, but how we look at this from a performance metric standpoint. Because again, we start from a limestone, and Randy has highlighted, if it makes better sense for us, chicken before the egg, let's get that ditch, let's take that limestone and see if we can cover it into that, that might be a great, so I have to. And again, I'm not an engineer, let me preface that again, but I do know a couple of them that are willing to engage in this conversation. And see if we're right with their same from how we're doing this.
Yes, I do know that one point, we had asked whether or not we could take some of the limestone, we actually put it into the ditching, and we were told that was unheard of. But to Mr. Dimoff's friend, he didn't say that immediately, he said that we talked with my boss. So we did, because we had talked about that at the board meeting, that maybe that would be a good edge, and so much of the limestone was just getting washed away. I did hear you say something about talking to Jamie Green, Mr. Boyke, and she was supposed to be here, and I told her I have a call tomorrow morning, and let her know how the meeting went. Are there specific programs I should be asking her about as far as what she can do for us?
If they can get that bill passed, if they want to, that's, I think.
Where are they at with the road now, do you know?
So, this past spring, the Michigan House of Representatives passed a local road package. That local road package would commit over $3.1 million in roads. We worked not only with the Macomb County Caucus, but with a number of folks statewide. And if that bill is reconciled with the Senate, that will lead to 108% increase in Macomb County's annual MTF allocation. We are working with Representative Green and all the folks that represent the county as far as prioritizing this bill. Undoubtedly, this needs to be reconciled with the state's budget this year. Our assumption is a lot of those conversations are going to go into September and ultimately reconcile with this, Commissioner Boyke also highlighted, is a number of the stuff that's currently being debated at school funding now too. These are some big-ticket items, but again, your greatest return on investment would be in infrastructure. And this has been something where, you know, Trustee Credron, you can't talk about the whole much for 25 years. You're absolutely right, for 25 years, this state has objectively failed at developing a viable funding strategy for roads, and now those bills are going to do it in astronaut order. And we're well aware that there's stipulations on here, where folks yell at us, well, why do I have to do a cost share? It's in state regulation, we're going to go over road. These are the things that we're learning, designing, modernizing every single day, but the state's still giving us a funding strategy that was developed in 1951. And as the commissioner highlighted, undoubtedly, that benefits a large majority of the 83 counties that are in the state of Michigan, but it's hurting Macomb County every single day. And that's something we're fighting, like, how to change.
Thank you. So again, I'm going to call one more time before we move to a meeting, and both Mr. Ray and Mr. Boyke said they would stay afterwards if someone had particular questions to talk about with them. I'm going to speak with the gentleman from Hidden Meadows about some things. And one more line, I'm just going to go off, see if anyone that has not been up here speaks, would like to speak, anyone at all. Okay, here in the other end, I want to thank everybody again for coming in, I want to thank Mr. Ray and Mr. Boyke for answering their questions and sharing their information. I want to thank all the other township supervisors that are here to listen to our concerns, and you probably have the same things, and on that note, I'm going to entertain a moment or two. Um, any further discussion? All the in-favors, may I? I, folks, may? Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you very much.